The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'll call the council to order. Let the roll reflect that all council members are in attendance and a quorum has been established. Council, you have before us the minutes of the regular meeting of March 2nd, 2015. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Okay, seeing none, they stand approved. Tonight, we have a presentation by Monsanto Fund Program. And I'm going to call on our distinguished Chief of Police to introduce that item. Chief, welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. Tonight, I'm just going to make a real brief introduction because Monsanto's got a few words to say to explain this donation. But the presentation tonight is a $2,500 donation to the Hastings Police Department, Hastings Police Department K-9 Unit. And who we have with us is Travis Roll. He's a local farmer. We visit a little bit. I came from the farm, so it was kind of nice to talk about old times, but it's changed a lot in 30 years. But anyway, he's a local farmer over in the Prescott River Falls area and represents Monsanto. So I'll let him explain a little bit about what the program's about, how this came about, and then we'll have him present the check.
Welcome to the meeting. We're very glad to have you here.
Thank you. Good evening. Like Brian said, my name is Travis Roll. I am a farmer across the river in Wisconsin, but I'm actually employed by Monsanto as a district sales rep in this area right here and have a couple of dealers in the community. Basically, the Monsanto Fund is making a donation tonight on behalf of the Grow Communities or the Grow Communities Fund. Under this program, in 1,300 counties across the United States, Monsanto donates different grants and different amounts of money to people who have been nominated. In your guys' community, Kayla Kimis nominated the Hastings Police Department K-9 Unit to receive the grant. She's one of our growers, and she was the winning farmer selected in Dakota County on behalf of a letter she wrote on your guys' part. So I'm here to present that award. Basically, you guys are the winners for Dakota County, and it's going to be a $2,500 donation on behalf of the Monsanto Fund to the Hastings Police Department K-9 Unit. So, yeah. The final thought that Monsanto Fund would have is that we just want to thank the Hastings Police Department and the K-9 Unit specifically for the work they do in your guys' community.
Thank you very much, Travis. On behalf of the community, we would like to thank Monsanto. And also, please name again the individual who won the award who donated it here?
Yep. Kayla Kimis was the winner's name.
Okay.
She was unable to be with us tonight, so.
Thank you. Yeah, tonight, we have the donation is going to our K-9. We have Officer Mike Schmitz here, who's our K-9 officer, and Ozzy, who's our K-9 officer dog, so.
(laughter)
Great. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Travis. Thank you. Thank you, Officer. Thank you, Ozzy. Next, council, we have items to be considered. I do have one, you'll see at your desk, a live burning training agreement that's asked to be added on to the consent agenda tonight. So I just wanted to mention that, and then I'll take that as amendment to, once we get to the consent agenda, and then make an announcement at consent agenda. So that'll be what we'll add on. So consent agenda, council. We have, again, a request for a live burning training agreement. Is there a motion to approve to put that on consent? Councilmember Alangi makes that motion to approve, seconded by councilmember Balsanic. Councilmember Balsanic?
Actually, I'd like to pull that out because I have a couple of questions about the live burning.
The live burning? Okay. Certainly, councilmember, we'll put that under administration number three, the new three.
Okay.
Okay? So that'll be a number three under administration prior to closed-door session. At consent agenda, also, councilmembers, I'm going to ask that we withdraw the authorized signature of development agreement for South Pines 8 addition. Be withdrawn. There's still discussions between the developer and staff on that item. So with that withdrawn, I don't need a motion to add to it. Should I take one? Okay, so that will be withdrawn, and I'll seek a motion to accept the consent agenda. Councilmember Brooks makes that motion to accept or to move, seconded by councilmember Schultz. That motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we'll go to awarding of contracts in public hearing. We have tonight an award of contract for a resolution for the Riverfront Renaissance Phase II Improvements Shihei Construction. Nick, our Public Works Director, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Hicks. City council members, good evening. The Engineering Department opened up three bids just more than a week ago for our Riverfront Renaissance Phase II project. We did get a favorable price from the low bidder, and the second-place bidder wasn't too far off either. Third one was a little bit higher, but it was adequate competition that we were hoping for, considering the bidding environment right now with construction projects. So it was good to see. Shihei Construction, as the mayor said, did submit the lowest of the three bids at $2,473,000, roughly. And after performing a very thorough reference check on Shihei and looking into their performance history, bonding capabilities, equipment, et cetera, we have concluded they're definitely capable and able to do this project for us. And so what we're recommending is to award the contract to them tonight, and that's what you all have, a resolution in front of you for consideration.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We'll bring that to the council dears. Is there any discussion? Council, what's your wish? Councilmember Balsanic makes a motion to approve, seconded by councilmember Alangi. That motion is now before the body to approve. Discussion to that motion. Councilmember Schultz?
Your Honor, in our packet, Nick, you had mentioned, it said, "With this information, staff is now able to offer better picture of the funding mixture for the project." See next page, and I don't have the next page.
Oh, I'm sorry for that. I can walk through those funding allocations step by step here.
Or is it this really long page with the really tiny printing?
It was a 21-page memo. I'm not sure exactly which.
Okay, yeah, that's not in here, I don't think.
Okay. Well, my apologies for that if it somehow got missed. I'll just list off the major funding contributions towards the project then. We have, of course, the contract itself, and then we have overhead costs, the design, the inspection, project administration, and so on. And a total project cost for this project is about $2.975 million when you add everything up. The bulk of that will come from our bonded debt load, $2.1 million. Then we go down, we've got about $130,000 from our water fund, about $35,000 from our sewer fund. We've got some utility adjustments that we're making in the park as a result of the work here. We've got about $162,000 from our Levy Park fund balance, and then $50,000 additional funding from our Parks Equipment Revolving Fund. Do I have that description right, Melanie? And then the remainder is a half million dollars through the Rotary Club's donations to contribute towards the pavilion component of the project. So all told, that adds up to $2,973,000.
Okay, thank you. Your Honor, one other follow-up. Back in January, when we authorized that you advertised for bids, I have a note here that says $3.07 million. Was that a cost estimate at that time? And now it's, but that's changed to 2.9?
Correct, yes. That was purely estimation based on available data at the time. Of course, we hadn't put it to the market yet for contractors to bid on, and now after that's played out, this is the end result. Now we know what contractors bid on it.
Your Honor, one more question.
Councilmember Schultz?
And does this cover all the costs on there, or are there other things that are missing or, I don't mean the word "missing," but that might need to be added on at some point that aren't calculated in that 2.9?
It is all-inclusive for Phase II, yep. There are some things that we will purchase outright outside of the contract for outfitting the remainder of the project, specialty items that don't really fit into the mold of the construction contract, and those were accounted for not only in that estimate in January, but also in this one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Melanie?
Your Honor and council, I would like to point out Nick's memo, if you didn't get that second page. We also have applied for a RIG grant, which is a redevelopment incentive grant through Dakota County CDA. We expect to know in about a month or so whether we are successful, but indications now that we may be awarded between $200,000 and $250,000 to offset the cost of the project. So should we be successful in that grant, it would be staff's recommendation that we no longer use any fund balance or ERF funds for the project. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Balsanic?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to point out that this is funding for Phase II of the Riverfront Renaissance project down at Levy Park, and it is completely separate funding from the Phase I project that was done down at Levy Park last year. So the two funds are not mixed together. And I'm just bringing this up again because of the publicity regarding the general contractor from Phase I. So the public can just be rest assured, this is Phase II, this is completely different spending and funding.
Thank you. We have a motion before the body to approve. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Okay? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we'll go to the public works portion of our meeting. We have an informational presentation of Highway 55 and Highway 61 intersection modifications from the Department of MinDOT. Nick?
Yes, I just wanted to take a minute to introduce our South Area Manager from MinDOT, John Solberg, who's going to share some information about the upcoming project for this intersection change here that we'll see a little bit later this summer. So, take it away, John.
Solberg, it's nice to see you again. I know we've had a working relationship in the past.
Absolutely.
Kind of a small bridge project.
Yeah, we got one of those, you know.
One of those.
I think that's kept you busy for a while down here.
You bet. Welcome back. We're glad to see you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm here tonight just to give you some basic information on this project we have out here in Hastings at 55 and 61, starting this summer. And so, as you'll see on the handouts that I gave you and up on the screen as well, the yellow is to indicate a new or a second left turn lane on 55 west or eastbound into town. And there's a couple of things about that right off the bat that you'll notice. Now, the red there is a new concrete median, which will effectively close the access to Eddy Street. So that's a change to the folks that are using Eddy Street. But what that does is improves the actual mobility on 55 and somewhat on 61, and I'll explain that in a little bit. First, I'd like to talk a little bit about Eddy Street and the change there. So approximately where that red line is where the center median will be built, that's where the left turn lane is to go into Eddy Street southbound. So that will be closed. It's relatively low volume. We have talked to the strip mall there and the various entities that live within that, and haven't really gotten any kind of strong feedback against at this point. And so we're fairly confident and happy with that as access is, there's alternate access to those locations. Now regarding the left turn lane, basically, this comes from what we call Congestion Management and Safety Program. So the whole reason we're doing this is to address safety and capacity around the metro region. And so this last year, approximately six projects were picked around the metro region to where we could invest relatively lower amounts of money, but make significant impacts in congestion and delays around the Twin Cities metro region. This project is the only one that was selected in the Dakota County area. What this one will do is effectively double the amount of left-turning capacity for that eastbound 55. And as I sat in that long line out there tonight at about 5:00, I realized exactly why we're doing it. So, but what that will do, again, is double that left-turn capacity. And so right now, just as an example, during that peak hour, there's 223 cars that want to turn left. And so you get to split that now into two lanes instead of one. So that'll be a lot better, which means twice as many should be able to get through on that green light. Then additionally, what this also does by allowing that left turn lane, we pushed the through traffic, which you'll see there is the middle lane, it's a left and a through. And that's important because actually relates to the right-turning traffic. So in the right-turning traffic in the PM, for instance, there are 350 right-turning cars, which is a pretty significant amount. And when you have that combined with what was the through traffic, it just slows up those right-turning traffic. So now they get their own lane, should be able to get out of that intersection that much quicker. There's benefits in the morning, but the PM's got the largest benefits. Now, speaking of the lights specifically, as part of the project, we will not be able to do flashing yellows on the east and westbound legs of the intersection. And in part, I'll have you just refer to that layout. You see how much longer the distance is between north and southbound, how far between those crosswalks and that sort of thing? Now compare that to the east-west. What effectively happens if we try to put flashing yellows in there is the cars turning left out of the pharmacy would combine, and the turning movements would hit the cars turning left from eastbound 55. So it's just not possible to do that. So we'll maintain that protected left that is currently out there right now. Another thing we're working, and Nick has brought up, is there's some emergency service beacons on the signals out there. And right now, I'm not sure what the, how well they're working for the city, so we're going to try and optimize that for the city as well with this project. It wasn't something until we realized just recently with the input, so we'll be adjusting that during the contract period with the contractors. Other than that, I mean, that's really the project in itself. Now, the impacts right now, and I made the mistake earlier, Melanie, it's not right after Memorial Day. It looks like construction right now, we're targeting that late-July time period and should last approximately a month, thereabouts. But I will caution you that we haven't gotten the contractor on board yet. And so the contractor ultimately has a lot of input into how fast and when they can do that sort of work. But that's what we're targeting. We want to avoid the Rivertown days. Certainly, we want to avoid the cruises that are going on. So I should also point out that there is just a small portion of work that has to take place on 61 itself, and that's because we have to take that concrete median on the north side of the intersection and shorten it up just a little bit so that we can get those left-turning cars into the proper lane. And again, that kind of goes back to why we can't get the flashing yellow in there and make that work for this intersection. So that is basically the project. Are there questions? I'm certainly happy to answer any.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Questions? Councilmember Balsanic?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we've got two drawings here, and we've got, and this one duplicates what you have up there. We've got this one, and referring back to what was in the newspaper and then initial drawings that were presented to the city. The larger one here is not showing a through lane.
Correct. This is, was an earlier version. I apologize for that.
Okay, so we have that, we have that now in place.
That is the correct one on the one page.
Which is very important when, this is part of Ward II, which I represent, and I have an email newsletter that goes out to 250 or so constituents. And so when I sent this out to them and I said, you know, "Give me some feedback," it was, "Oh, my God, you know, we can't go through into Walgreens." So I said I would just double-check on that to make sure.
Absolutely, and I can send that revised layout if that's helpful.
That would be great, and then I can forward that on to constituents. We're not going to have any problem with that. Now, with the shifting of lanes, we've got that barrier on the east side of 61. We've got this guy right here. That's a curb barrier. Are we, we're not touching that? We're leaving that alone?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, yes, that's correct. We are not touching the east side of 61.
So that through lane, are people going to have to kind of jog a little to the right and then go into the parking lot, or are they going to be okay with that?
There may be a slight movement to the right, but ultimately, I mean, as they're coming across the intersection, it's probably a difference of about five feet in that movement over to get into the intersection on the east side.
And I know you've done due diligence on all of this, but maybe just a little footnote just to double-check that. That was a concern, again, from constituents in terms of having a good through flight there. One thing that everybody liked was that we've got a separation of the through lane from the right-turn lane, and this is going to make things, I think, move along a little bit better as well, so that you don't have people going straight, blocking people who want to make a right turn on a red light. So that's great as well. You talked about the yellow flashing lights for left turns and that we're not going to have those. Are we going to change any of the timing of the light then? Well, in other words, the left turn, we've got two lanes for left turns. Is that going to be shorter, longer? Are you going to reexamine that? Because I know, I know that there's a state MinDOT traffic light expert. It is that person who...
I think we have an expert for about everybody, it seems like, some days.
And, I mean, it, you know, it may be on the surface humorous, but I can certainly understand the importance of it, especially after I tried to, well, not tried, we actually did get the timing of the lights on 55 at Westview and Pleasant and General Seabahn updated so that we've got better traffic control in terms of, especially on left turns for that. But are you going to be doing any changes on the timing of the lights then?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, yeah, actually, that's a great point. So part of this, the intersection itself, once we get that completed, MinDOT needs to come back through and do retiming on the signal, which will ultimately help the whole 61 corridor moving through town and should potentially help with some of the green time then that's going across 61 at those various locations.
Okay, and that's great, because it is time-consuming. It's not something where somebody comes out and just opens up the box and goes 10 extra seconds or something like that. But it does involve, I hate to say calculus. I always try to get by every day without using calculus, but in this case, it's probably going to be something we're going to need. And again, just to double-check, I did not receive any negative comments about closing off Eddy Street to 61. And the main concern there is making the left turn off of 55 to go south onto Eddy. And again, there were no comments from the strip mall at all.
We did not receive any comments that would make us rethink closing that left turn.
Yeah, well, it'll take a while for everybody, everyone to get used to. If somebody wants to get to the beer stube off of 61, they're going to have to go down to, is that 12th Street over by Perkins?
Yeah, backing around.
12th Street, Nick is saying? Okay. And then turn into the parking lot and then proceed on around. It's a longer way to go, but it's something they'll just have to learn to live with eventually. Okay. All right, well, that takes care of my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick questions. When you put the new median in, will there be a sign saying no left turn, or will it be painted for people coming off of Eddy trying to take a left for education time for a little bit?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, generally on those sorts of situations, we do put a one-way sign, so that indicates that people will only be able to make that right turn lane. I don't know the specifics on what the signing plan are, though.
Got it. Councilmember?
Mr. Mayor, and I just recommend that maybe next fall, then the planning committee looks at backwards. Let's go look at the four-way stop sign that was put in back closer to the 11th Street, right by Salvation Army. That, maybe we could revisit that, because would we still need a four-way stop sign there with this closure?
Less traffic coming down, yeah, on 12.
But I would say after it's, let's see what happens.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good suggestion. Okay. Also, is there, do you have a motion?
It's informational.
Oh, it's informational, that's right. Okay, so that's good. Okay, so is that, everyone wish?
If we're fully informed.
You're fully informed?
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. We're fully informed. Thank you, Mr. Solberg, for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And we look forward to the project. Thank you.
I'll leave that.
Next, we go to Community Development Council. Before you tonight, you'll see the new agreement that's been revised. It's before you. And John, welcome to the meeting. I'll have you introduce it. It's in relation to art space, option to purchase property.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city councilmembers. As the mayor had pointed out, I did send a revised agreement to you today, outlined some of the marked-up changes, and we'll go over those in just a moment. But the main issue we have here tonight is to authorize signature of an option agreement for a portion of Block 1 for the art space project. And I know the council is aware of some of the activities that have been going on related to art space over the last five weeks or so. In essence, a project that was really not on our radar screen because of funding has become something that could quite possibly happen due to the participation of funding from Dakota County CDA to make the project happen. One of the requirements in order to be eligible for some of the grant funding at Dakota CDA is to have a real estate option on the property. Essentially, what this document does is holds the property for art space for a period of time. It allows them to, allows them to know that they have development rights to the property for that given period of time, does not give them ownership of the property. The time period for that has been amended from the original agreement. Originally, we were looking at keeping the option available till the end of July or end of June of this year. After consultations with Dakota CDA, they recommended that that option period be extended to December 31st, 2015. And the reason behind that being, one of the things that art space will be applying for are these low-income housing tax credits, and the decision on that will not occur until late in 2015. And so they wanted to preserve the option availability for that. In a review of that request, that was certainly acceptable to us. The other thing we did do within the document is more narrowly define the property itself that would be part of it. We are looking at Block 1, which is that area that is on the north side of Second Street between Tyler and the railroad tracks. Right now, it's about 2.75 acres. We're looking at one acre of property for the art space development. If you're familiar with that property, the parking lot that's just east of Graphic Design, it's essentially that property. One acre would be 23, 24 feet north of that property line if you drew it straight across. So the intent of this is to get a development project that would be fronting along Second Street to take advantage of that location. Again, what art space has determined through their market study is that a market is available for about 30 to 40 units, artist units within that building itself. So this would be the first of a couple of different steps that we would have related to this project. The option agreement itself would only limit the ability of art space to deal with that property, doesn't give out any ownership, doesn't set any terms at this point for what the price of that property would be. These are things that we're going to be speaking more with the Finance Committee of City Council on. The next meeting we have with them is scheduled at 7:00 a.m. on Monday to talk about these issues. And the way that the agreement is set up, Hedra is the owner of the property, and so what we're doing tonight is asking for the authorization for Hedra to sign the agreement. And Hedra will be considering that at their meeting coming up this Thursday. So I can stand for any questions if you have them. Thank you. The next meeting we have with them is scheduled at 7:00 a.m. on Monday to talk about these issues. And the way that the agreement is set up, Hedra is the owner of the property, and so what we're doing tonight is asking for the authorization for Hedra to sign the agreement. And Hedra will be considering that at their meeting coming up this Thursday. So I can stand for any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that presentation, John. Council, the site is before us, so what's your wish? Councilmember Schultz?
John, in the information that we had for our meeting last week, the CDA deadline for requiring art space to select is April fifteenth. Has that changed?
Councilmember, the April fifteenth deadline was to secure a site, and in conversations we've had with CDA, the property has been narrowed to this site only, and so I believe we've met those obligations that CDA has sent out.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Alangi makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Balsanik. That motion is now before the body. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Balsanik.
Thank you, Mayor. Has art space, they said that, you know, with the research they did, that it looked like they were okay for thirty-five units, artist loft space, livable space. And I've seen that figure kind of change now a little bit, somewhere between thirty-five and forty-five. Are they refining that, or are they still sticking to the thirty-five?
Sure. Councilmember, that seems to be an open question. I think, I know from the market research, the report, I think, stated thirty-seven. In conversations with art space, it's been anywhere between thirty and forty, and so I think what they'll do is put a design team onto the site, determine what the best yield could be, and then bring that forward.
Okay. And then, have they given any indication as to whether the entire property will be used for apartments, or are they talking about commercial retail in addition to the apartments?
Sure. Councilmember, we have had some discussions with them on other space, whether it be commercial or retail. It sounds like they're open to considering that. I don't know if that would be part of the final proposal that would be brought back, but it's something they're looking at.
Okay. And that one-acre site is going to be enough for surface parking then, or are they thinking about enclosed parking?
Sure. Councilmember, what their typical model would have is parking for the units would be underground, generally at a one-for-one ratio. Anything above that would be on the surface. And speaking to them, they're comfortable that the one-acre lot would be sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, council, we have a motion. Councilmember Alangi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to briefly express the excitement that I know other council members feel as we were talking about this at the meeting before, and I know the members of the public, they're very excited about this. This is, within a few years, we could really have something, really, we already have some great stuff already happening downtown, we could really add to that in a wonderful way and enhance it with more residents in the area, more artists in the area, leading to more events, leading to more support of our local businesses down there, which in turn has the wonderful multiplier effect. So with the Hudson project on one side and this on the other side, anchoring the other side, it's really very exciting, and I really appreciate staff's attentiveness to this and taking the opportunity, seizing the opportunity that came before us. Also want to express appreciation to Dakota County for the great work that they did in making this available to us, we hope, and remaining open to it as we move forward. So if this works out, it's going to be pretty exciting stuff there, and really appreciate you being on top of this, John. Thank you.
Thank you. I think when we talk about the Riverfront Renaissance, that's having a lot of meetings. We take a look at what's happening with the Hudson, what's happening tonight when we approved the Renaissance project with the Pavilion, when we take a look at the art space project that's in front of us, when we take a look at some of the businesses downtown, newly open like Bella Vista and things like that nature, it's really kind of an exciting time. So, I echo your words, councilmember. Okay, we have a motion before the body. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Thank you, John. Next, we have the approval of creation of a public arts grant program and task force. Melanie?
Your Honor and council, staying on an arts theme, late 2014, the city council directed staff to do some research and develop a public arts grant program and structure around that. So we went back and asked a number of questions, and we have a proposal before the council tonight. The first question we asked was the public purpose for creating such a program, and Minnesota statute does allow for a community to create a public art program funded by public dollars. And we also looked at what would be funded as part of this. Again, Minnesota statute allows artistic organizations to be funded using public dollars. We met with the Finance Committee of the council on February twelfth to discuss some parameters. The first question was to talk about the definition, policy of art, and the Finance Committee recommended that general support for the program going forward with it, but that we define art broadly to not necessarily focus on a fixed piece or sculpture, but also include performance or art that may be a little bit more transient in nature. The second piece that the committee talked through was the structure. Typically, we've had advisory commissions that review, act in advisory capacity to the city council. We talked about whether we wanted to create another advisory commission, and it was the Finance Committee's recommendation that because we're looking at this as a pilot program, a task force concept seems to be the best fit. So the recommendation is that we would create a seven-or-so-member task force that would have a fixed length of time. Right now, it's set to expire. The recommendation is that it would be set to expire December thirty-first, 2016, and the task force would have fairly generalized guiding principles to move forward on a public arts grant program, rather than creating an advisory commission, a standing advisory commission. The third discussion item was the scope of the task force, and it was, recognize that with all of the exciting projects going on along the Riverfront Renaissance and the components of art that are included, that that be a focus for the task force to focus on for the first eighteen months or so of its existence. And the final question had to do with funding. The Finance Committee recommended that up to $10,000 be allocated for this pilot program. We currently have $2,500 in an arts account right now that would clearly be, meet the needs of the, in the direction of this kind of a structure, and the council recommends up to $7,500 additionally be allocated out of fund balance for a total allocation of $10,000. The committee also recommended that should the task force not make any funding recommendations in 2015, that the dollars be able to be rolled over for the same purpose in 2016, again, to fund a public art grant program. So the action before you tonight, Your Honor and council, is threefold. The first is to create a public arts grant program. The second is to create a task force to act in advisory capacity for the council, and the third is to allocate $10,000 with a $7,500 transfer from the general fund, total allocation of $10,000 in 2015 for this purpose. Be happy to stand for any questions.
Okay, council, this item is before us. Councilmember Schultz?
Your Honor, I will make a motion. Can we do that all in one?
Yeah.
All of the things, as Melanie so carefully sketched it out there, I make that motion?
Finance Committee's recommendations?
Yes.
Okay, the Finance Committee's recommendations been moved, is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Alangi. That motion is now before the body.
Your Honor, I have a question. Melanie, as we get through 2016, and we get a lot of what we might have in terms of our public art at the riverfront, it will be possible for the funding to be used for other community art elsewhere in the city, correct?
Your Honor and council members, absolutely, that would be the intent, focusing primarily on the riverfront at this point, but broadening it out throughout the community going forward.
Thank you. Your Honor, the other thing I was going to say, I think I'm really happy that we've put together something like this that has some structure, because we get requests a lot, you know, all the time for people wanting us to fund various projects or programs. And this will give us, first of all, parameters so we know we can guide what we're looking for, and second of all, it, I think it says to the community that we are very interested in providing art, not as something that you have to go necessarily to museum and look at, which I am not against, I like to do that too. But this will beautify the city and provide it in a public space, and I'm really excited to see how this works as we move forward.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Councilmember Brooks, did you have a statement for, why don't you go first? Councilmember Brooks, please.
I do have a question. One of my questions is, I have done some grant writing in the past, and sometimes there are provisions in the grants that say that you cannot use the grant for salaries and things of that nature. Do we make any kind of parameter like that? Are we meaning to leave it fairly open as to how the money can be used?
Councilmember, Your Honor and Councilmember Brooks, I think at this point, we left, we have some parameters in the funding, I'm just pulling up the page right now. We do allow salaries at this point. I would note, we took this model from a number of other communities, and we would ask the ability to be flexible as and if we need to make changes, but at this point, salaries would be included as an allowable expense.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? I just have a question as to the technical aspect of the task force. How many members will be on the task force? And is that something that the city council will then approve, the membership of the task force? And when the task force makes a decision, does it come to city council for approval, or do they have, you know, final say in that realm of responsibility?
Your Honor and council, it's kind of the new, first time we've explored this, but the thought was, it would be modeled closely after an advisory commission structure, whereas it's advisory in nature, appointed by the council, and advising the council per se. So we would ask, at some point, we'll get an application process out here soon, up to seven members would be a member of the task force to answer the question about that, act in advisory capacity. The final, the final funding approval, I think the intent of the Finance Committee was, it was going to come back to the city council. So similar to an advisory commission, but just a fixed term as far as the existence of the task force.
We used to have down here at City Hall, and I don't know, Melanie, maybe you could answer, because it's been a few years, but that was, I think, three people in charge of an arts consulting group that were involved with the city, and they were in charge of the art that we see here at City Hall on the walls and things like that. Are they still in existence? It may not, they may not be.
Your Honor and council, I honestly don't know the answer to that. I know that they've had previously been very active in moving art around City Hall and repurposing it. They haven't done that recently, so I'll have to circle back on that.
Yeah, let's talk about that a little bit, maybe the future of this task force, and if it, if it's, you know, if it's something that's ongoing, maybe perhaps that's something that they could come under their fold in the future, because we have a lot of valuable art here at City Hall up on the second floor and around this building, so. Okay? Is there any other discussion to the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, council, we have to approve the Levy Park renaming, that process, we have that in your packet, we have our distinguished parks director, Chris Jenkins here. Chris, welcome to the meeting.
Well, thank you for such kind words, distinguished. Mr. Mayor and council, here tonight to discuss the renaming process for Levy Park. As you're aware through the council memo, this project or this process began in January with the Parks and Recreation Commission after receiving a recommendation by council to rename Levy Park with the substantial improvements and redevelopment that's happening on the riverfront. So the Parks and Recreation Commission met in January to start the process, to start generating some name ideas, and then at that point, staff solicited information from the community through social media website and the newspaper, and started receiving some names in. So in February, we took a list of probably twenty-five names back to the Park and Recreation Commission, and their charge at that point was to narrow it down to three. And those are the three that are listed in the memo, the Riverwalk, the Riverfront, and Riverwalk Park. So their charge to narrow that down to three was complete at that point. Guidance from there is to come back the following month, in March, and select a finalist with some rationale. So at our March Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, we had a very robust conversation with our Park and Rec Commission, with a lot of visioning and marketability and branding potential conversations that were happening about this entire stretch of river. So the conversation quickly shifted from a focus on Levy Park proper to the land, the public land between the CP Rail Bridge and Lock and Dam. And how can we make, how can, how can the name or a name generate some excitement, some atmosphere for this entire stretch of land? So the Park and Rec Commission shifted focus a little bit, and instead of desiring to name Levy Park itself, they chose to recommend to council for your consideration, an umbrella name for that entire stretch of land as Hastings Riverwalk. So that's the name that they've suggested for an umbrella while retaining the existing names, Levy Park, JC Park, Lake Rebecca, and River Flats, as identifiers within that space. So if a friend is coming from the cities and you want to meet at the Hastings Riverwalk, well, meet me at JC Park in the Riverwalk. Meet me at Levy Park in the Riverwalk. Meet me at the Pavilion. And we generated some other names for an art garden that's going to be down there as well, just stuff we're thinking about, too. So that's what's before council tonight for consideration. I'll be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chris, for that presentation. Council, this item is before us. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Chris, I think at this point, you know, there was no council committee discussion on this, and I think what we should probably do with some of these renaming parts is bring that before the council committee, before it gets to the city council as well. So, and, you know, this is our first shot at this anyway, so, I mean, I think it was a good process, and I think it worked out really well, and came up with some great ideas here. But I think what I'd like to do, Your Honor, is to move this to Park and Rec Committee and have them take a look at it. I myself am the chair of that committee, so I'd like to take a look at that before we got to this point here, before we recommend it to the full city council. And I think we had some dates that we were kind of kicking around, Melanie as well. I don't know if we arrived at a particular date for a meeting yet, but it would be in the nearer future that we would get that to the committee.
There's a motion referred us to Park and Rec Committee, is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Councilmember Nelson, you're right where I'm going to be. I was going to say, I think the council, I've really enjoyed watching this process, all the suggestions, I went to the Park and Rec Commission. I appreciate all the effort that they came forward and the three names, and I understand their rationale. But we, as council members, have not had a chance to vet it very much. We have certainly had a chance to talk to our constituencies about it, but we haven't had a chance, really at this point, to impact that decision, you know, up to this point, except maybe throwing in a suggestion. So I think that's a good idea. I know I've heard some other great names, for example, there's the bridge crossing, used to be a ferry crossing, now the CP Crossing, so I've had some people talk about riverfront crossings at Riverwalk, or things of that nature. So I think we need to vet this a little bit more at council level. It is a big deal. It's not just about Hastings here. Sure, it's our riverfront, you know, we're familiar with the Levy, and we're familiar with JC Park, but we want to make sure that we put some excitement to the name and also a regional attraction, that people in the region of the Twin Cities and our neighbors nearby understand that what we're creating here is a theme that, you know, will bring excitement, you know, pique people's curiosity, and I think we need a little more of an analysis of that, and so I appreciate your motion, councilmember, to do that. Further discussion? Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, I want to thank you for ushering this through with the commission over the last few months, and again, this is a new process that we're going through, and it has been fascinating for me to look at... And it has been fascinating for me to look at, not only thinking about renaming Levy Park, but also looking at the history of how many of our parks were named. Down the street from where I live, Wilson Park was named Wilson Park. It started out, interestingly enough, it was a kind of a lumber storage area back with the early settlers. And Spring Street, which borders that park on the west side, is called Spring Street because there was a spring there. And that's where everybody would bring their cows and their horses and other livestock down to get a drink in the morning and a drink in the afternoon. The house where my wife and I live right now had a barn in the backyard with, near as we can tell, a cow and a horse, in addition to chickens. I don't think they heard of the chickens down there to get a drink, but...
Not under this council.
No, not under this council, yeah. Never had chickens. Actually, forget I even brought that up. But Wilson Park was named Wilson Park because a mayor, a mayor named Wilson, donated a fairly good size of money back then, as I recall, it was $2,000, to turn that lumber storage area into a park. And with that, somehow, we ended up with the name Wilson Park because there was a financial investment on the part of that mayor. Now, I'm not suggesting that our mayor...
Where's my checkbook?
I like where you're going, Counsel.
Make a donation, but he certainly is free to do so if he wants to. Paul Hicks Park, that kind of has a nice ring to it.
At the riverfront?
Yeah, at the riverfront. At any rate, my own dentist said that we should call it Bridgework Dental Dam Levy Park. And those of you that have been to the dentist recently can probably figure out all of that stuff. I think it's good that we get it to a committee because this is over 50 pages of emails and some documents that I received either via telephone call or through the internet. All of them came, we'll blame Melanie, it's all Melanie's fault. Because all of this started when the last council update, or administrator's update, excuse me, came out. And it was mentioned that there were the three nominations for renaming Levy Park. The, I received a letter from the Pioneer Room, from Cindy Smith and Shirley Dalaska. And the two of them did research on the Levy. And interestingly enough, the research showed that passenger ships docked down at what we now call JC Park. And the commerce-type riverboats docked where Levy Park is right now. And that's in between the railroad tracks and the American Legion. So there were, you know, two different, you know, landing areas there. And as near as they can tell in their research, the only military personnel, whoever left Hastings via the river, were members of the First Minnesota, and they went off to the Civil War. All other personnel who left for military service after that left either by train from Hastings, or they left by train from up in the St. Paul area. There is one thing that I think really does bear some significance here that was brought up in the letter from the Pioneer folks. They said, "Something to consider when renaming public areas, especially public areas that have been commonly named for well over a century, is how long it will take for the digital mapping companies to change the name in their records." The area will obviously continue being called the Levy by the local people. And it does bear asking, is MapQuest then going to jump right on this and change the name? Renaming public areas also tends to add confusion for future researchers and planners to try and figure out where the heck Levy Park was, for example. And I can say, without any hesitation, and I'm going to ask you a question here about that in a second, but the overwhelming majority of the emails that I got from people said they did not want to change the name. They wanted to leave it as Levy Park. And I'm mentioning this so, you know, when it does get to the Park and Rec's committee, that you do consider that, and I will pass all of this information along to the committee. But many people said, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." When we think of a Levy, or when we think of Levy Park, we think of, you know, the area down there. And I wrote as, at one point, I put my hat on as American Legion Commander and was asked by our Board of Directors from the American Legion to express the desire to, again, leave the name as it is. The, you know, in terms of the definition of Levy, what is a Levy? A Levy is a landing, you know, from which we had, as I said earlier, commerce and passengers getting on and off ships. There is a definition of a Levy that refers to a dam, something that is holding water back. And I don't think that the people of Hastings think of our Levy Park as a Levy Park that was holding back, holding back the water. So, you know, this is something, again, I think, that we need to consider. There's one other thing that I think does bear mentioning. And that is that, if I can find it here real quickly, that, yeah, the Hastings Women's Club did an awful lot of work down there at the Levy Park, adding plantings, gardens, and so on and so forth. And here we go. The Levy, the Levy continued to serve as a park, largely configured based on a 1920 design. And we do have some photographs of that in our archives, as a matter of fact. But what's being pointed out here is that by 1980, the park system was again in need of improvements. And the placement of the old swing span, the replacement, excuse me, of the old swing span railroad bridge with a new lift span, which is now in place, was the instigation for expansion and improvements down at Levy Park. The Hastings Heritage Preservation Commission joined forces with local veterans organizations to create the New Veterans Memorial Levy Park. That was the name that was approved in 1980, Veterans Memorial Levy Park. And so, is, not as far back as 1980. We had, you know, something that was approved as the name of the park. It's been shortened Levy Park, and that's kind of where we are right now. I did receive emails from people who said that, "With all due respect to our veterans, we have enough things honoring veterans in the Hastings area." And being a veteran myself, 22 years in the military, I can be sympathetic to that. I don't take offense at someone stating that. We have a memorial at the Hastings Veterans Home. We have the Sailor and Soldiers Memorial Cemetery off of First and County 42. We have a Veterans Memorial at Roadside Park. And we have a reconstituted one that's going to be going in now at the Levy, at the Levy Park as well. And there was some feeling that we should perhaps lop off the veterans' part of it and perhaps the memorial part of it. And so if you have Veterans Memorial Levy Park, and you take away veterans and memorial, you're back to Levy Park again, which is what, again, the majority of the people tended to want. Riverwalk, which is the recommendation coming from the commission, is the name of parks, a couple of parks, one in River Falls, one in, also one in Stillwater. Might that create some confusion? I don't know. I'm not sure. But these are things that I think do bear some, you know, some review regarding all of that. The question that I had was, during the time that you were requesting ideas for name changes and so forth, out of those requests that came in, how many did say, "Leave it alone, just leave it as Levy Park"? Do you know? Approximately, you know?
Approximately a dozen.
Okay. So there was a feeling that went, you know, went to the commission stating that particular case, then, too. Well, I, I'm glad we are referring this to committee. And I will forward all of this on to you. A lot of this, like I say, was done, also Justin Fortney did a lot of the research on this as well. And for the public's information, there was a study that was done as part of the pre-planning for the new bridge. And it is a, it's a study that uses a form called the Minnesota Architecture History Inventory Form. And that form is used when something like a new bridge is being considered into an area that has historic significance. This document is, I believe, about 30 pages long. Have you, did you take a look at it?
No, I haven't seen that.
Justin forwarded it to me. And if anybody is interested in taking a look at it, you could contact me or contact Justin at City Hall. Justin is a staff member, works out of the planning department here at the city. And he can put you in the direction, or I can put you in the direction of this document. It includes photographs of the Levy and the river area, steamships, paddle wheelers, barges. There are pictures of entertainment barges. They used to put a band on a barge, pull in, people would get on board, pay some money. They'd take them out into the middle of the river, and they'd cruise up and down, and they'd dance all night. A lot of fun, maybe, and that's something we can consider for Levy Park down the line. But it's got some fascinating, fascinating history on Levy Park. There was a railroad spur that went from the Hudson Building over to the, over to the railroad bridge that was taken out just as recently as, I believe, 1981. It was still there up until that point. So, but I do, you know, again, want to reiterate, Chris, the fine work that you've done on this. You were pretty much the guinea pig on this, you know, with it being the first time. And so we're going to oil some gears and get the roadmap out again and take a look at this. And again, I want to thank the Parks and Recreation Commission for taking the time and the energy to bring this to us. I think it's been a very healthy discussion, and they have certainly been a very good part of that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. And again, I think that's why this is important. I think, you know, when we take a look at the name Levy Park, of course, all of them were people who live here, who are used to it. That's part of some historical note. And in my view, to a certain extent, that's part of the problem. I think we need to take a look at how we could name this area and be sensitive to a regional interest. And I think that'll be the challenge of the committee. And maybe they can work that word in there somewhere, maybe they can't. But I think that will be the challenge. And, you know, sometimes history is making history. And as we unfold what we're doing down there, it's a new day. And we'll just see how the committee gets further information. And I appreciate Councilmember Balsanik, that you bring this information and emails forward. Certainly part of the discussion. Councilmember Balsanik?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have checked my notes here before I said, "Thank you." Two other things regarding this. The Historic Preservation Commission will be looking at this very idea as well tomorrow at their monthly meeting, that's tomorrow evening. There was one other thing I wanted to add to this whole mix, and that would be the opportunity to sell naming rights to the park as a way to get some additional revenue for our Parks Department. There are many public spaces in the area, in the state, and of course, around the country that have done this. And there could be a substantial amount of money that could be harnessed through the use of naming rights. So I'd like to recommend to the committee that they take a look at that. If we can have Target Field public funding, if we can have Mall of America Field public funding right on down the line, maybe we can have something along the same line for Levy Park. Okay. Oh, also to thank Mildred Ruhr, who spent an awful lot of time and submitted over a half dozen names for renaming Levy Park. And also Judy Seidel, as well, who also did a great amount of research on this as well. They were very forthcoming and very helpful in my doing all of this research, too. All right, I'm finally done, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion before the body. Do you send this proposal to Park and Rec Committee? Is there further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Okay, next we'll go to Councilmember Balsanik. You asked that number, or the request for the live burning training proposal be brought under Administration Number Three. I turn it over to you.
Thank you.
With caution.
Yeah, it's a question. We have our police chief here, we don't, is there anyone here from the fire department tonight? By any chance?
Your Honor and Counsel, no.
No.
No, there isn't.
And that's understandable, because this was supposed to be in the consent agenda. I have, over time, had people ask if it's all right to go and observe the training process. And I'm just bringing this up, I don't want to create any kind of liability issues or anything like that. But, you know, what we're talking about here, again, is a house on a piece of property off of 160th Street is being donated for use as a fire training day. The house is uninhabitable, it's going to, it can't be reused or reestablished. And so the fire department is going to be using it for training purposes. And we've done this in the past. And so what I would like to know is, is this something that the public could come and watch? I'm not suggesting we sell popcorn and, you know, candy and all those kinds of things. But to what extent can this be observed?
Mayor and Counsel, I did have some discussions with John Townsend about this activity and working on the agreement. I can't say for sure, but I think they would be concerned with anyone who is not directly related to the training being on the property. The document here gives only authority for those people who are identified by the fire department to be on the property. So I don't think that would provide a very good opportunity for spectators to be there. And I also would be concerned there would be some liability with that if someone getting hurt, or also the level of management that would have to go along with having spectators on the property. to go along with having spectators on the property at the same time. So, I would somewhat be suggesting that does not happen.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we need a motion on this, then?
I do need a motion.
I move that we accept...
Motion's been moved by councilmember Bolsonic to approve the training document that staff brought forward. Seconded by councilmember Schultz, is there further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. We're going to end our meeting now. I just want to announce that the city council will be going into closed-door session for the purposes of issuing issues relating to security and security systems. But however, prior for us to motion to recess, we're going to recess, go into closed-door session, and open up the meeting just to adjourn. So, we're going to take, at this time, comments from the audience. Is there any comments from the audience tonight? Anyone here would like to speak to the council? Okay? Okay? Seeing none, council announcements, announcements. Councilmember Schultz?
Hedrow will be in eating Thursday night. This is, we delayed our meeting by one week, too, and we'll be discussing art space and a couple of other issues, I believe, 6:30 here in the chambers. And next Monday, the 23rd Finance Committee meeting will be getting together at 7:00 a.m. here at City Hall. I'll see how many people are here.
Okay. Sounds good. Councilmember Vaughn?
Just a reminder, I have a Red Rock Commission meeting on the 26th of March, and that is now moved as at Newport City Hall.
Okay. Any further announcements? Okay, I just have a few announcements. On Monday, March, oh, well, that's already here. On Tuesday, March 17th, tomorrow, the Heritage Preservation Commission will be meeting at 7:00 p.m. at City Hall, the one that was alluded to by councilmember Bolsonic. On Monday, March 23rd, the Planning Commission will be meeting here in the chambers at 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall. On Monday, April 6th, the Administration Committee, Chair Schultz, Bolsonic, and Vaughn will be meeting at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall to discuss community special events. And I think, I assume that means the ordinance language that governs it, right? Community events?
Your Honor and council, it's a policy, some policy...
Policy.
...considerations for the committee.
Policy, yeah. Okay. The city council's next regular scheduled meeting will be on Monday, April 6th, at 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall. Wednesday, April 8th, the Public Safety Committee, Chair Alaji, councilmembers Brox and Schultz will be meeting at 7:00 a.m., again, I know that's your favorite time, councilmember Schultz, at City Hall to discuss the fire study implementation update. There's no further, councilmember Alaji?
7:00, I have it down at 7:30.
Let me check my notes. I have 7:00 a.m., but we'll check.
I would hate to show the way.
It'd be the first time.
If I give it extra half hour.
We'll take it, okay.
Your Honor and council, I have it in the calendar for 7:00, but if we want to do 7:30, I will defer to the committee members. We have to talk about this meeting.
Okay, 7:00 a.m., Wednesday, April 8th, Public Safety Committee. Okay, there's no further announcements. I will accept the motion to recess for the purposes of the council going in closed-door session to discuss security issues. Councilmember Brox makes that motion, seconded by councilmember Nelson. Move to recess for purpose of going in a closed-door session. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. That motion prevails. Before we leave, I just want to thank Troop 23 for being at our council meeting tonight. You were very attentive, and I hope you earned your citizen badges and merits. You certainly deserve it, sent through a council meeting.